We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, January the 30th, 2025. Our invocation will be done by Pastor JP of Kingdom Builders Ministry. After that, we'll have the Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
I am scripture will be Hebrews, chapter number 10, verse number 25. And the word of the Lord reads, "This is not the time to pull away and neglect meeting together, as some has formed the habit of doing. In fact, we should come together even more frequently, eagerly, eager to encourage each other onward as we anticipate the day of dawning." Let us pray. Father, we thank you, God, for this meeting tonight, God, for we know the time that we're living in right now, God. I pray, God, that your wisdom, God, your will be done in this meeting tonight, God. Let us continue, God, that every decision that is being made, God, it would be made, God, concerning right now, God, your will concerning how to move this community forward in what you have called predestined and ordained for this region right now, God. Let us continue to meet right now, God, to understand the times of what is needed in order to push us into continuing to do what you called us to do until the day of your coming. We thank you right now, God, for your grace and your mercy. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge, and thank you so much, Pastor JP. We appreciate you coming in, doing the invocation. Good evening. My name is Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to our Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session. This is a work session where items will be discussed this evening, and they will not be voted on until next Monday at our voting meeting. The items that we're going to handle tonight are just for discussion only. If you have any concerns or issues that are not on the agenda, there will be ample time under the comments, citizens, and delegates for you to discuss your business. So I'd like to welcome you to the council meeting this evening. I'll go over a few protocol issues, and then we'll get into the body of the meeting. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. If you deviate from that requirement, a second deviation will result in us asking you to leave the premises or chambers this evening. Only one person speaking at a time. When you're at the podium, we ask that you will not turn around and talk to folks in the audience, that you want to applaud or carry on a conversation or be disruptive, that you would direct all of your concerns and comments to myself or the committee chair person who is doing the presentation of that particular item. We're only required to take public comments during public hearings, and if you have any materials that you need to give to myself and council members that's printed, we ask that you would please give those materials to our Assistant City Clerk, and she will make copies and disseminate to myself and council members. This is how the meeting will be handled this evening. The agenda item will be handled by that committee chair person. Then that person representing that item will come forward to give us a report. Myself and council members will possibly ask clarifying questions to help us make our decision for next Monday. There is a maximum of 20 minutes for those in favor of the item, 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. If you would like to talk, we ask that you would please fill out a card for speaker card. They're outside on the desk, they're blue cards. You can put your name and address on those cards, hand it to Ms. Jackson, our Assistant City Clerk, and she will put it into the formal record. When you come to the podium, give us your name and address, and then you have five minutes to talk to us about anything that is pertaining to the city of Douglasville. This is not a question-and-answer format or debate. We're here to hear the information, deliberate, and make our decisions next week. So that is all that we have. If you do have any kind of technology, like your phone or iPad or something, we ask that you please put those in silent mode so they won't be disruptive during the meeting. That's a whole lot of instructions. Hopefully, we're all on the same page, and we can move on with the agenda. There are paper agendas outside if you'd like to have a copy of the paper agenda, and/or you can follow us on the screen, and we'll move on with the information. So we do not have any announcements or presentations. Excuse me. We'll move on, then, to the next agenda item, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business at this time under the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We'll move on, then, to the next committee, which is Item Number Six, Finance Committee, chaired by Council Member Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have three items tonight. Item A, authorize the mayor to sign change order number 19 with Reeves Young LLC in the amount of $748,427.31 for the rock blasting and removal for the upper football field parking lot at Jesse Davis Park, and Mr. Thompson will handle this.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So during excavation activities to install those additional 80 parking spaces, we encounter at that time rock formations, and we were only able to install 32 of those spaces. So initially, the plan was to block the area off, label it as Phase Two of the construction for the park, and proceed with the park opening. However, staff believes that it's best to take advantage of our current funding sources, resources, to address the issue now, while the crew is still on site and equipment, and while prices are stagnant the way they are now. Construction will begin early February with the completion date of spring 2025 if the item is approved. Fund usage are as follows, and I just want to point out, this is worst-case scenario. It includes site preparation, earthwork. That includes roughly 3,200 cubic yards of rock removal. Also want to point out, too, that our contractor has confirmed that before the blasting takes place, they will do additional borings to basically confirm that volume of rock that's needed to be removed. Just to continue, parking infrastructure is roughly $100,000. Landscaping and restoration is roughly $65,000. Engineering and general conditions is roughly $170,000. And then we have markup and contingencies, which comes up to roughly $60,000. Are there any questions or concerns?
Thank you. Marcus, appreciate the presentation. Council, any questions about rock?
No, sir. A lot of rock.
Lot of rock. Yeah, there's no question. It is what it is, right?
It is. Yeah, it's exactly what it is. You'd never know where you're going to find it. That's the problem. We have the unfortunate circumstance of sitting on top of a whole lot of it.
Councilwoman Miller, did you turn your mic on?
I did. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was just a little curious about the timeframe for this work, and will this hold up the opening of the park?
No, not at all.
So this is work that will take place over, I guess, the next few months?
Yes, ma'am.
And just be phased in?
Yes, and should be completed roughly around, I'll say, the end of April.
Okay. And I did see, of course, Item C and how that's tied into it. So does that mean that the contingency fund that we've exhausted that?
Well, yes, if approved, will be reimbursed using the tax allocation district funding.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. That was all.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, any other questions?
Point of order, would it make sense to take, you move Item C up to, up one position since it's related?
That's my question.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want me to read that one?
If you don't mind.
Sure. All right, I'm going to skip to Item C since they're connected. And Mr. Thompson, don't go too far, but adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to allocate downtown and New Horizons Tax Allocation District Funds in an amount not to exceed $748,428 to reimburse the city's general fund for a portion of certain redevelopment costs incurred or to be incurred by the city in connection with the redevelopment of Jesse Davis Park, i.e., rock. Go ahead, Ms. Callen.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Karen Callen, Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Manager, 6695 Church Street. And in order to use funds out of the tax allocation district collections, we must go through a process where we meet with the TAD Advisory Committee. We met with them this past week. Marcus Thompson, the city engineer, made a presentation to the board. The board approved this application unanimously, and the total is $748,427. And you have a resolution attached at the end of the presentation.
Any questions on this item? Seems like a good use of the...
Do we want to make the comments? Did you make those comments?
I don't think we're in a conversation.
Yeah.
There's so much you can say about rock.
Yeah, that's true.
We did have requests from the TAD Committee to make us two points during the meeting about the borings and also notifications. So we wanted to make sure that we followed up on that, and Mayor Pro Tem was in that meeting as well, too. So just wanted to...
We don't anticipate, once this parking lot's done, there's nothing else going on over Jesse Davis that's going to run into rock that we, I mean, everything's pretty much done except this parking lot, or never say never.
Never say never.
I'll defer to the city manager and Chris Bass.
I told you I can't save you at the mic every time. Just kidding. We're pretty much complete with the park. This is the final stage. I know there was some conversation around the Alice Hawthorne Building. I mean, we did just recently do some renovation to that in the 2016 FLOST. So I think as it relates to the totality of the park, we're pretty much complete with the exception of any future renovations or upkeeps that we may do throughout the years, but, you know, I don't anticipate that for another 10 to 15 years.
So we're, right now, we're through with moving dirt at Jesse Davis Park.
That is correct. This is the last component of dirt movement.
All right. So I'm starting to have nightmares about rocks and how much they cost to move. But, okay, thank you, Ms. Callen and Mr. Thompson, and I would like to ask if Item A and C could be placed on the consent agenda for Monday?
I'm good with that.
Be all right with everybody? All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. All right, Ms. Callen's going to stay close. Hold a public hearing. Item B, hold a public hearing to consider opting out of the statewide adjusted base year ad valorem homestead exemption for the city of Douglasville, and Ms. Callen will handle this also.
Sam's going to turn this around real quick.
Good evening. Karen Callen again, Chief Financial Officer for the city of Douglasville, 6695 Church Street. And it is the intent of the city of Douglasville to opt out of House Bill 581. In doing so, following the state statute, we must have three public hearings, so this is the first of three public hearings. The deadline to opt out and file with the Secretary of State is March 1st, but I do want to say right out of the gate that the, this does not affect senior exemptions. So if we've heard that, mostly some of the feedback is that seniors feel like they might be losing their senior exemption given by the Board of Education, but this does not apply to this new statute. The origin of the bill, it was created by the Georgia Legislature, and it's in response to rising property values, and the goal of this legislation is to freeze property values. The impact is property values are capped at a rate that is set by the state revenue commissioner, not by locals, by the state revenue commissioner. And just a quick example, if your house has an assessed value, your base year is 100,000, and then the next year it's valued, your fair market value is 125,000, but the inflation rate is set at 2%, then your value is capped at 102,000, your base year plus 2%, which that changes every year based on the state revenue commissioner. Your float is the difference, which would be the 23,000. And then that is, has to be maintained on the books by the Tax Commissioner's Office, and then when that property is sold, then the new value, your fair market value, transfers to the new owner. When this bill was created, there was another piece to the legislation called the floating local option sales tax, and that was created to offset the revenue loss that anyone who decided to opt in would absorb through the property tax caps. The cities and counties must all have the floating homestead exemption to be eligible to collect the 1%. The FLOST is additional 1% sales tax, similar to our local option sales tax, distributed between the governments according to an intergovernmental agreement, or we call an IGA. So all cities and counties must agree to opt in in order for us to collect the 1%, which is supposed to offset the revenue losses from property values. But the Douglas County is not going to opt in, so that option is not on the table for Some quick pros and cons. Pros are property values will be capped and to the homeowner could possibly, when I say could possibly, lower the taxes. The cons are it would shift the tax burden to non-residential owners, that would be businesses, renters, non-homestead properties, because this cap does not affect those. The mileage rate would have to be increased because revenues coming in mean that's what we can use to pay for services. So if the property values are lower, elected officials might have to increase the mileage rate anyway to be able to provide revenue to make, provide services. It gets confusing. Another con is it gets confusing when property is sold or transferred because the change of the new fair market value. And then FLOST is not an option because all the cities and counties must opt in, and we know that Douglas County has started their public hearings as well to opt out. Again, we have, this is the first of three required. The second public hearing is February 6th at 11:00 a.m. in the same building, and Thursday, February 13th at 5:00 p.m. in this, in this same room. We have a QR code here. All this is posted online for additional resources. There's a lot of resources out there right now on House Bill 581. All cities and counties are dealing with this, and at this time, I would like to open for you to speak for or against.
So at this time, anyone that would like to come forward, do they, do they have to fill out?
Yeah.
Of course. Yeah. If you haven't already filled one out, they'll take care of you, and you can come down to this mic. If you do come down, make sure that you give us your name and address for the record, and so we invite you now. The mic is open. Anybody that has feelings about this? All right. Well, we'll be having two more of these, so, and if there's any questions, Ms. Callen will be around, you know, ask any of us, and if I don't know the answer, I'll get the answer. But I'm going to tell you right now, this 581 was confusing, and so, so I'd like to close the public hearing at this time, and Madam Mayor, that's all we, yes, I'm sorry. Oh, we got, the mic is open. Come on down.
You have to come to the microphone, please. Give us your name and address for the record. You're going to have to fill out a speaker form if you have not done that after. Yes, ma'am?
You can do it in a minute.
Well, yes, my, my name is Lucille Darrell, and I live at 4020 Robindale Drive here in Douglasville, and I actually voted no on this to opt out, but I get, I read where 60% of people agreed, and then statewide, 63%. My question is, okay, I heard the lady say that it doesn't affect seniors. That's good, but how does, does that impact school funding? I'm kind of interested in that. Is that, or is that not on the table?
Ms. Callen, would you like to answer that question? And just remind everybody, when you say it doesn't affect senior exemptions, what specifically that, that has to do with?
Yeah, the seniors have an exemption where they do not pay Board of Education taxes, which is a large chunk, the largest chunk of the property tax bill. So you will not lose that. You will still have that exemption. So for the 1%, Board of Education has their own 1% that they collect, so their revenue will not be affected by that.
And then, I would like to know who sponsored this, this portion of the bill?
I don't remember the one that sponsored, but it did, was a constitutional amendment?
Yeah.
Yep.
You can go onto the state of Georgia's website. We can get that information on our website, and it'll show you the bill and what particular legislature, legislator sponsored the bill, but it was a constitutional amendment.
Oh, really?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. And Ms. Callen, the school board's already opted out. Correct. So they're opting out.
They've started their public hearings. I was going to say, the school board had their meetings as well. I'm not certain if they've all done all three, but those particular questions about the school board, you know, can be raised at their meetings as well.
I don't believe they're through all their public hearings. We got the Tax Commissioner here, so he says no, they're not. One more left? Okay. So thank you, Mr. Commissioner, for coming out.
If there's anyone else that would like to come down, which our public hearing is still in place, anybody else? All right. I would like to, I need to make a motion?
No.
No. I'd like to close the public hearing at this time, and Madam Mayor, that's all I have tonight under Finance.
Thank you so much, Coach Watts. We appreciate that. Thank you to our staff, our city engineer, Marcus Thompson, for those items A and C, and for our Assistant City Manager, CFO, Ms. Callen, for Item B, and we appreciate the attendance for, from our Tax Commissioner, Douglas County Tax Commissioner, Mr. Greg Baker. Thank you so much for taking the time to come out, and to the citizens that want to have a better understanding about House Bill 581. So thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on to the next committee. So the vice chair is Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller, for Housing and Community Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Housing and Community Affairs Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Well, you do have business on the next one. It's Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item, which is to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement to conduct election and with Douglas County, Georgia, and the Douglas County Board of Elections and Registration for Douglas County to provide municipal election services during the calendar year 2025.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hampton, lead us in that discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We did receive a presentation from your election superintendent at your last round of meetings. Attached is a portion of his presentation detailing a schedule as well as the cost for the elections. It was fairly straightforward of if there are no further questions, staff is recommending that the agreement be signed. The superintendent is prepared to come and address you all again if necessary, but I think he made a pretty thorough presentation to you all the last time you met.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, any questions or comments from the council? Madam Mayor?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, City Manager, for bringing this information to us. I know we did have, at our last council meeting, the Superintendent of Elections, Mr. Kidd, talked to us. I think the only thing that changed was possibly another time to vote on a Saturday, and I think that was mandated by the state or something from our last elections two years ago during our staggered rotation for council, mayor and council. I think that's the only thing that changed in the contract for services, was an additional time on a Saturday to vote. Thank you so much. That's all I can comment.
Councilwoman Miller?
I have one quick question. Thank you so much. As far as how, the fee that we pay for the voting, I see on there that it's $3 per registered voter. So does that mean that for all the registered voters who don't show up to the polls, that we still pay for them as well? So people really need to get out and, and vote? Okay.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? The heart of a free society is its fair and free elections, and so we shall move forward with, and if they're $3 a voter, that's still a pretty good bargain. So not only do you exercise your constitutional rights, get out and help us pay for that election. If there's no other objections, I'd like to place this item on the consent agenda for Monday.
Doesn't look like it's an issue.
So be it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have under Legislative Intergovernmental Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. You are on the Committee for Personnel and Organization Committee. Would you mind taking that one for me as well?
I'm happy to, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
We have two items under Personnel and Organization tonight. The first is to adopt a resolution to add membership in a Fund of Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency, GMA, for the purpose of offering PTSD benefits to eligible first responders as required by the Ashley Wilson Act. And Dr. Brian Westfield will lead us in this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Dr. Brian Westfield, Human Resources Director, 6695 Church. This proposal outlines the participation in the GMA's PTSD program required by House Bill 451. This bill mandates PTSD-related benefits for first responders beginning January 1st, 2025. This program is insured by MetLife and includes two key coverage components, a critical illness lump sum, and a long-term PTSD disability benefit. The total estimate for the premium for the city of Douglasville is roughly 15K. That's $150 per sworn officer. At the time we ran the census, I think the chief had about 98 or 99 sworn officers. There is a slight administrative fee also in that, in that amount. Considerations, this will put us in compliance with House Bill 451. Premiums are based upon a census that is reviewed semi-annually or twice a year, and then lastly, your approval will allow the city manager to sign this policy. I welcome any questions for mayor and council.
Thank you, Dr. Westfield. Any questions or comments? Madam Mayor?
I do. Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Dr. Westfield. I appreciate you bringing this information to us as our HR director. I did have a question. It says first responders. Do we know if the county is going to offer this same program, or it's just through GMA? I know that, of course, we're talking about our police officers, but we do pay service delivery a substantial amount for fire, for the fire department and EMS, and 9/11, all those workers, first responders. So is there a similar program that merits this one, or does this bleed over to the firefighters and what we do in our service delivery?
Madam Mayor, great question. I do not have that answer, but I will follow up, and I will get that answer for you.
I have that answer, Madam Mayor.
Oh, great.
So GMEB's worked with ACCG. They are offering the same program because it is state mandated. The purpose for the program was to eliminate the reliance of PTSD claims going toward workers' comp.
Oh, very good. So...
Yep. So all jurisdictions are required.
For all first responders?
Absolutely.
That is wonderful. Now, the other one is for former military who may, I know we're not first responders now, but if you've had military service and may suffer from PTSD, is there any kind of avenue or resources for, for counseling or any kind of support?
They've actually mandated that the event must have occurred either on or after 1 July 2024.
Okay.
So it's not retroback.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Dr. Westfield. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? I'm not quite sure that it's even possible to do too much to help our first responders, and so I think this is absolutely very good thing to be incorporating. And if there's no opposition, I'd like to place this on the consent agenda on Monday.
It looks like it's a go.
Our second item is to adopt an ordinance to amend the city of Douglasville's personnel policies and procedures... policies and procedures, to revise Section 4-8 regarding temporary employees, to revise Section 5-1 regarding merit pay increases, to revise Section 6-3 regarding duration of the probationary period, to revise Section 7-2 regarding periodic employee evaluations, to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, and the illustrious Dr. Westfield will...
That's a lot.
Further enlighten us on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, so if I could, I would like to go out of sequence, based upon what's up there, because two of these are intertwined, and I would like to address those if I could first. So with the merit, the current policy mandates an employee must complete 12 months of employment, and receive an annual evaluation to be eligible for merit. This current policy murdered some personnel ineligible due to merit, predicated on the hire date or the promotion date. It also extended the merit wait time for some personnel within the city to as far as 27 months. With this proposal, newly promoted employee will, will still receive a merit increase immediately upon their promotion, and future merit would depend on a probationary or evaluation that's annual, with the following criteria: if the employee is promoted prior to 30 September, they're eligible for merit the following year, i.e., the report ends in December, they're eligible for when merit's payable, either in February or March. An employee who's promoted October 1st through 31 December, eligible for merit that second year, so they would essentially do three months in a new role, get another evaluation, hence the 15 months. This proposed change would allow for a shorter waiting period for merit, to a maximum of 17 to 19 months, predicated when we pay merit, which will help with employee retention. I know that was a lot, I welcome any questions you might have.
Any questions, Madam Mayor?
I do, I'm trying to, discalcula, I'm trying to get these, all these numbers together. So, the person is there for a year, and they've, they've completed their probationary period, they are eligible for merit. If they transfer to another department, does that year clock start all over again, and then they won't be eligible, or, so you said something like 17 months, or 20, what, what's going on with all that?
Yes, ma'am, so the example I will give, if, let's say we had somebody promoted in January, they would get a six-month probationary evaluation in July.
Okay.
The way the policies are currently written, that person would not be eligible for merit at the beginning, or at the end of that year for that next year, so probationary evaluation was July, now we're at December 31st, we're paying merit, that person is not eligible.
Okay.
Current policy mandates that they wait that entire next year before they're eligible. So this will shorten that time, and it will incorporate promotion, promotion evaluations and probationary, hence, that's why I wanted to talk about merit, and then the evaluations next. Great question.
All right, so if they transfer, though, within, after that year, does it start again in the next department? Their probationary time?
Yes, so probationary periods will be mandated for any promotion, or any transfer to a new job title.
Okay, so this starts, okay, thank you so much, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, any other questions? Okay, anything else?
So I'll press on, so if the merit policy is approved, it would mandate a change to the evaluations policy. The key changes with the evaluate, with the evaluation policy, is that it would link it to the merit program. Right now, merit is only associated with annual evaluations, and that period is 1 January to 31 December. This would unlink that, and it would give merit eligibility for probationary and regular evaluations. The proposed changes would essentially rename annual performance evaluations to performance evaluations, it would clean up the language, showing that both probationary and performance evaluations would render somebody eligible for merit. I welcome any questions.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? Press on?
Okay, I'll press on. Next will be the discussion I had with the chief concerning PPP updates, excuse me, for certified police officers. So in talking with the chief, there was a change to the Georgia post-training standards, it increased the training hours from 408 to roughly 802 hours, essentially 10 weeks to 20 weeks. Based upon that, and in talking with the chief, we wanted to look at the probationary period for certified officers. So what the chief is proposing is that the probationary period for newly hired police officers remains at 12 months. For individuals going to the academy, it should be 12 months from the date of graduation. It's currently set at 18 months, but 18 months would not render enough time to give an accurate evaluation if they're in an academy and then the FTO. And chief, I'm not sure if you wanted to chime in on anything, or you want to add anything?
Well, that's, that's good, going to 20 weeks, you know, now these officers that we are hiring, basically, they will not be ready to perform their course of duties for about two years. You know, you're talking about five months, that's in Monday training, then they got to do the FTO training, which is field training, that's another, that's another three months, you know, just getting out of all this training, and then being able to apply what they'll learn, you know, it's, it's going to take a while for us to get these new officers up and going, so we, with the 12 months, we'll have an opportunity to extend their training if they're not cutting the mustard, and we have, we have done that before, you know, so the extension period of, of the FTO training is something that we've done, and then, and that's a feather in our cap, to make sure that we are putting out the best people possible to, to do the job, and, and make sure that our city is protected, and we have people that's making the right decisions, not just hiring anybody just to fill a hole.
Thank you, chief. So the change with the training standards was effective January 1st, 2025, and I think the chief has two people going through the 20-week course right now. Welcome any additional questions?
Madam Mayor, you want to give a question, too?
I do, thank you so much, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, thank you, Dr. Westfield. Dr. Sparks, so, so it's 12 months after they finish the academy, and then the field training? Isn't there some, do they have to sign to stay with the police department for a couple of years, or is there something else that there is, you sign an agreement, and if you leave prior to that agreement, you have to pay the money back for all that training that we paid for, for them to get their certification?
Yes, ma'am. Requirement that they stay two years.
Two years after, so it's really three years in totality, that they'd be, they'll be with us, they made their decision to get married to the city of Douglasville, from the training, the 12 months, and then the two-year signing agreement?
Right.
Okay, got it.
If they get hired by another police agency, they may go work at Walmart.
They can't leave, though, before the two years, oh, that's what I'm talking about, right?
They can.
They can, they have to pay the money back.
They can't go to another police department.
Oh, okay, I see.
They can go to Walmart, they can go sell shoes or something, you know, but if they go to another police department, that department has to pay.
Has to pay their money back, okay, thank you so much, chief, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, chief.
Any question, other questions from anyone? All right, was there anything else?
Yes, sir, one more.
I lost track there.
So the next one is an update to Section 4-8, which deals with the temporary positions we, we have with the city of Douglasville. As the city continues to grow, there's a possible need for temporary positions. Right now, the policy mandates that mayor and council approves or extends any temporary positions. Our request is that we give that authority to the city manager, so we won't have to burden the mayor and council with temporary positions as we continue to grow. Subject to your questions, that's all I have, I'm not sure if you had anything, Marsha?
No, I mean, this policy's been in place for a long time, I mean, we use temporary positions from time to time when we have to fill shortages, sometimes we use temporary positions when we're in the middle of budget cycle, and we can't permanently fill a position yet until we go back to budget, and we have some additional funds. There are a variety of individuals, some are in this room, that started off as temporary employees, so it's a tool that we use. What we're seeing, though, however, is that oftentimes, we have to extend it, sometimes well beyond a year, and we're not prepared for that position to go on, to, to just end at 12 months, so, I mean, we can continue to come, we can come to you all with that, but I think that for what, the purposes for what we use is probably best just handled amongst staff.
Have we always taken care of our own searches, rather, do we, have we ever used temp agencies at all?
We have, from time to time, the problem with temporary agencies is the fee that they charge, it's not always cost-effective, so when we budget as part of recruitment, Dr. Westfield doesn't have recruitment, the cost for temporary agencies in his budget, oftentimes, it's 10 to 15% of the wages that we would be paying those employees.
Okay.
And, and if they don't work out, we don't get that money back.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none? Is that about wrapping up?
That's all I have, subject to any additional questions.
Seeing none, there's a lot to chew on there, is everyone okay with, if we put that on the consent agenda, or is there anything anybody wants to mull over the weekend on?
I don't see any heartburn.
All right, then, put that on the consent agenda. Thank you, Dr. Westfield, Madam Mayor, that is all we have under the Personnel and Organization Committee, if it isn't enough.
I know it, thank you so much, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, for handling that committee for me, I appreciate it, thank you, Dr. Westfield, and City Manager, and Chief Sparks, we appreciate the staff's comments as well. We'll move on, then, to Planning and Development Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have a couple of items this evening, the first is item number 24-415, says to hold a public hearing and consider a request for a special land use permit for self-storage facility for property zone light industrial district, being 3.558 acres at 2203 South Flat Rock Road and Land Lot 190, District 2, Section 5, parcel ID 01009, application by, is that Nazir Realty Group? Our very own Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening, mayor and council, Dana Gray, 6695 Church Street. As stated, this is a proposal for a special land use permit for a mini warehouse, and they are located at 2203 South Flat Rock Road. The lot is presently vacant, in its own light industrial. They are proposing 483 units, of which 209 units will be non-climate controlled, and 274 will be climate, I'm sorry, will be climate-controlled units. These units are one-story, they are proposing brick facades with accentuated glass at the entrance, which will be the office, and I do not know if the applicant, oh, and the applicant is present.
Okay, thank you. Council, before the applicant comes up, do you guys have any questions of Mr. Gray? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does this come under our architectural guidelines in any way, shape, or form?
It, it does.
It does?
In our code, yes, we have facade standards for light industrial, so those...
So, are they being applied here?
I'm sorry?
Are they being applied here?
Yes, they are, so they have the option of brick, stone, tilt-up concrete facade, I'm going to put my glasses on so I can see better, precast, precast, glass, stucco, natural wood, and artificial wood siding.
Wasn't there provision for some level of detailing or articulation on the facades? Because I see a wainscote band, and I see a couple of faux columns, that's it. I mean, I'll be frank about, this is one of the ugliest buildings I've seen in a long time, I'm put that, I'm putting that out there, I know we have limited control over that, or, but, this isn't very, this is, and this is a big building, this is taking up a lot of, a lot of space, to our community. That's my, that's my personal opinion, I'll just put that out there. I don't know what is, I'm, I'm remembering, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm remembering that, that the architectural standards acquired some level of detailing on the building, and I don't see much of any detailing on these drawings.
Correct, so the minimum that they can do is 75% or, or more, or greater, so it was their option to provide more brick than accentuating any, any more details.
Okay.
If I could interrupt for just a moment, because I don't see that I have any slides in here that show the facade?
You don't?
In detail, what page are you on?
I'm looking at page 31 of 54. Oh, that's one, there's several draw, there's actually several sheets of...
But they met the requirements, correct, Mr. Gray?
Yes, yes. I mean, I won't question staff, I'm not questioning you, I'm sure you know your stuff. I'm just, I'm questioning our standards.
We gotta change them if they met them, and we don't like them.
Well, these are some same questions, then, or similar that we had in our pre-development meeting earlier, and those are some that we may could even bring up in a couple of weeks, but to, to keep us moving along here, curious, do we have any other questions of Mr. Gray before the applicant comes up? No? Would you guys like to come down, and if you'll give us your name and address for the record, if you have anything else that you would like to add to this?
Good evening, good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Nasir Farah, I'm the owner of the Nasir Realty Group, and will be the owner of the Nova Storage. So, we have a non-climate control building, the main front building will be climate-controlled building, state-of-art, all brick, will comply with all the requirements under Section 2.05 and 2.06. We're also considering another option, which is probably working with the planning committee, maybe have a bi-level, two-story building, and eliminate the, the, the non-climate control units, that's, that's another option that we're also considering. This is a, this already is zone as a light industrial, currently, we are proposing 51,225 gross square feet, the climate-controlled building will be 26,000 square feet, and the rest will be 25,000 square feet, and it will be all brick gated, and 24 hours security, merchandising, all that good stuff, that comes with a typical storage units.
Hold on, so did you say that you're, you're considering two different options, though?
Well, we, we, the, the way the, I will also let the architectural maybe describe it a little bit better, it's an option, and when we go with, with the next phase, which the planning, which, which the development planning, but one option is, the way the landscape is, there's a steep topo, in order to take advantage from that, we can have a bi-level story, and that bi-level would be more like a, you know, all brick, glasses, the front office will be all glass, and the building will, will be full brick, and 75% and 25% other facets, materials. So, yeah, that's an option that we are considering, but, but right now, the, what we apply for the special land use permit is 26,000 single-story building, and all bricks with glasses, and there will be a gate, and a full fencing, and all the other good stuff that comes with the typical self-storage buildings.
Okay, because I, I feel like if you were going with another option, that you would have to, like, back up and go back through the entire application process, I think, and don't, don't quote me on that, please, we'd have to verify. Coach, do you have a question? Right.
So the request is to be able to have the storage unit, however, we have not reviewed that proposal, so I do not know if they would exceed the allowable square footage for that, so this is just, I'm just rounding out about this now, so...
Okay, okay, so it looks like the... Okay, so it looks like then that our, our options are to move forward with this and then, I, I guess, and then if this doesn't work, then you would look at doing the, the other?
So, it's actually for the, for the, to, to be approved for that use to use a storage. We do do go for the, for the development plan, but they proposed it in this way with this square footage, so I do have a concern about that.
Okay. Madam Mayor, did you have a question?
I, I did. Thank you so much, Councilmember Miller. Thank you, Mr. Gray and Mr. Nasir for the presentation. I had a couple of questions. So, in the special land use permit for a storage unit, is it in the table, the categories?
We have a long list in-
For light industrial?
It's in light industrial, but within storage in the UDO, we have all these requirements that elicit about 19 of them. So, we would definitely have to review that again.
So, I saw those that you had listed. Did this go before the planning commission?
Yes, it did.
Okay, what was their recommendation?
Approval.
It was approval. I don't see the, I was trying to look around page 10 or 11, trying to see what their comments were. I know you had some, a lot of comments as well. And so, for Mr. Nasir, where, what's the rationale with having some of them climate-controlled and some of them not, the units?
I will also give a few minutes for Ben to talk, if, to explain. So, yeah, so what, what we normally do is we do a feasibility study, what's really need, the need for the consumers. So, based, based on our findings, there's a need for more climate-control units than a non-climate control units. So, that's the reason why I'm mixing, we're making the front building more climate-controlled.
So, so that's my question. Why don't you make all of them climate-controlled? Because I would think if someone, if I had a storage unit with the extreme weather conditions that we're having now, that it's really hot or it's cold, that you would have all of them be climate-controlled. Why, why are some designated not to be?
Exactly. That's why I was a little bit, maybe, I, I say too early, one of the reason, one of the reasons why we are considering the bi-level is to have more climate control and make the building look more nicer and bigger. And that will probably be the second option that we will consider after we, after we get the special land use permit to boot that storage on that, on the site. So, that, we, we are leaning toward full climate-control buildings. Don't see your question.
Yes, sir, but we couldn't, it will just be a, you're giving me a promissory note. We have to, we have to do, vote on what is, you know, presented to us. So, that's not an option, to have a second story or have all of them climate-controlled, unless, you know, you change the plan or something. I'm just trying to ask, you know?
No, we're not changing the plan. It's more like if, if we consider having more climate-control, that would be something that we will have to internally approve. I, I shouldn't probably say this to, to confuse the committee, but, but for now, our plan is to cover that 26,000 square footage that we thought it's needed within the five-mile radius plus another 25,000 climate-control. That's the option that we, that's what we are looking for in approval.
Okay. And, and that was the last question you just brought up, was the need, the needs assessment in the area of South Flat Rock Road? I'm not certain if they're, I know typically there may be multi-family dwellings, apartments, or townhomes or something. I know there are some that were done off of Malone Road, and it's because we have that beautiful new apartment complex, but I'm not sure if there's multi-family in the area that will support another storage unit. Is there something within that five-mile radius where you see a needs assessment, or this is just a project you would like to do, thinking they'll come?
What, what the feasibility study looks at is the, within three-mile radius market and also within five-mile radius market. The population and how many climate-control buildings or non-climate control buildings are within that market. So, that's how we determine the need for a self-storage within the area.
Okay. I'm just thinking of the area near, that's near Doris Road and North Douglas Elementary and all of that doesn't seem to, it's like single-family homes. I was just wondering if it was multi-use. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, absolutely. Councilman Davis, you had a question?
Yes, there are residents on Flat, Flat Rock. Mr. Chandler has property and some more residents that I know. Have you spoken with anyone on Flat Rock?
There's a, next door, there's a, it's a light industrial building. They also have some sort of, I think, business next door. We talked to those folks. There's on the, on the west, on the south side, there is a manufacturing facility, I think it's a fabricator building.
Yeah.
We talked to them as well. So, yeah, we have some, and across the street, I think the, the City Water Buildings and a few, yeah.
Yeah.
But there's not done many, the, the distant, the closest house is like a thousand feet away from that facility or a couple.
I know where it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Coach, did you have a question?
Does anybody here know what the topography, topography is? That property, like, in other words, the climate-control is going to be out front facing the road? That, but behind it, there's a landslide up? Is it flat? Does it go down?
Hi, yeah. My name is Ben Johnson with MSSI Design. I reside at 103 Holder Road, Temple, Georgia, 30179. I'm the architectural consultant on this project. We have reviewed the topography, and that is why he proposed the bi-level versus doing the single-story, because of the topography and it's, it's sloping down to the back of the property. And we feel like, and, and I didn't want to change the option of what we were doing, but when we looked at it, we felt like we could provide the city with a, a much better-looking building with a bi-level, two-story, where single-story is at street level and two-story is in the back, and have all of the doors and loading on the exterior in the back to not face any of the roadways. And, and then put a second option for a future phase for any additional multi-store, or, or self-storage in the back, but it would be all climate-controlled instead of non-climate-controlled, which is a better application for this project, and I believe it would suit well for the community. And we would also consider working with staff on meeting any architectural design standards and how they would like the building to, to look.
Okay. I, I mean, of course, a two-story building that is all interior access and climate-controlled, of course, would look much better, and I think, I know that the residents that are there are, it's quite a bit of buffer there, but because we're looking at an application here and we're, and we do need to hold a public hearing that is for this item right here, so if you guys are wanting to change it, I think we need to check with staff and see what we have to do, because I think we would have to, like, re-advertise and then hold this portion of the meeting at a later date.
What, so I believe what Mr. Gray was saying is that this is for just a special use permit, just for it to be self-storage only? And the, obviously, we would work with staff and council to provide whatever options y'all want for the, for the property, but I believe that the application is just for the special use permit. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
And what we were proposing originally was just doing a single-story up front, climate-controlled, a nice facade. We'll work with staff on that as well, and then drive up in the, in the back away from, from the street as non-climate.
Help, help me out, guys, because I'm, I'm sorry, like, I just, I don't understand. So, then we don't, because we have to have a public hearing, we've advertised for it, but it's for the special land use permit for the self-storage. So, are you proposing to not do the self-storage?
No, they're doing the self-
It would still be self-storage. What he's saying is that this application is strictly for the building typology on that site. This is not for the final design. So, he's saying they still have the option to change the design, even if they get the permit. Am I understanding that correctly?
So, so keep rolling and then, and then change it?
It won't have to be a public hearing for the design, just for the-
Just for the use.
So, then you're telling me that there's an option that this thing could get even bigger?
No.
Okay, okay.
No, in fact, we would stick with the same square footage that we're proposing now-
Okay.
-for the entire site, but we would actually make it in a smaller footprint, but just go two stories to where you would have, it would still be 60,000 square feet, but it would be a bi-level and would be a smaller building towards the front-
Okay.
-with a 30,000 footprint instead of, instead of it being spread out over the entire property.
Dana, Dana, could you also address, I think what Ms. Miller is asking, is how to protect the integrity of the design during the zoning process?
So, we will have a development plan phase, and during that time, we can review the architectural-
Okay.
-design that they're proposing. However, staff doesn't have a, does have a challenge because we're not aware of the new design. And to add, we do not even know now if they're meeting the height requirements, the extension of the parapet, which has its own requirements, so that's something that we'll definitely do during the design phase, and if you need to be kept abreast with that, we will keep you abreast of that process.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for that explanation. At this time, guys, this is a public hearing, so I think that we need to stay on this agenda point, and then if, so if it changes in design, we can, we can cross that bridge when we get there. But this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here who would like to speak for or against this item, now is your chance. If you'd like to come down, Ms. Welsh, I think you might be the only one here, you can come give us your name and address for the record. Or if not, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. And if you guys, if there are no more questions, we can take this item up on Monday. All right, thank you, guys, very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We do have one more item this evening. I'll try to keep it a little bit more simple for us, and that is item 25-049. Says authorize staff to make an application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for the Community Development Assistance Program for a land use development plan around Arbor Place Mall. For the mayor to sign the letter of support for application, and Mr. Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Good evening again. So, we are applying for the Atlanta Regional Commission, the ARC, for a grant called the Community Development Assistance Program, otherwise known as CDAP. The program provides planning and implementation assistance to nonprofit and local governments. This became, it came before you last year as well, if you, if you, just to refresh. Unfortunately, it wasn't chosen, but it was in the upper ranks, and we were trying to partner with Georgia Tech, and they did not have the bandwidth to take on the project as well as our, ARC at that time, so they encouraged us to reapply. So, our proposed project is called Douglas Boulevard Moving Forward: An Economic Visioning Plan for Arbor Place Mall and the surrounding areas. So, it is Arbor Place Mall along with Douglas Boulevard, built to Bill Arp and to Chapel Hill. So, we are asking for a letter of support from the mayor, and that concludes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gray. I know that this is something that we've been discussing for, for quite some time and all the other planning that we do here in the community. Council, do you guys have questions or thoughts? Mayor Protem, I'm shocked.
Thank you. That is my word. Have we, do we have any, have we had any discussions with mall management or mall ownership as far as getting them-
Yes, sir. They're actually in- They're actually in support and provided with, provided us with a letter of support along with-
They spoke? An actual human being from the, all right, that's encouraging.
Along with the Cultural Arts Council, Elevate Douglas, and Douglasville Development Authority have all given us letters of support.
Okay. I mean, it, it's absolutely essential that the mall play along with this, because if they don't, I mean, this is going to be, we'll be banging our heads, because there's, they're going to have to play a critical role in any redevelopment. I mean, the vast majority of this is going to be involving their property.
Right.
But, I mean, there's some great ideas out there, what we can do as far as redeveloping that area, and, and it'll be to their benefit primarily.
Right, right.
So, I would hope that they take an interest in, in what we're trying to do here, so.
It's definitely an open palate.
Okay, thank you. Good, good job. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Council, were there any other thoughts on this item? If not, are you guys okay with placing this on the consent agenda? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Madam Mayor, that is all that we have this evening for planning and development.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman, and thank you to Mr. Gray and City Manager for helping us with these items, and we'll, come back Monday, we'll make a decision on the first item. So, now we'll move on to Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's also chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening for public improvement and beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to Public Relations Committee chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Don't be at the set, just have, thank you.
You're welcome, Councilman Davis. Public Safety Committee, the Vice Chair, Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under public safety.
Thank you, sir. With your stand on deck, you have Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thanks, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So, we have two items tonight. Reappoint Michael Carey to the retail two-post of the Douglasville Convention and Visitors' Bureau Board for a two-year term, expiring December 31st, 2026, and Ms. Jackson will handle this.
Thank you, Councilman Watts. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. Mr. Michael Carey has served as the retail two-post individual for the CVB Board for about, I will say, seven years now. He represents the mall, and so he would like to be reappointed for another two-year term.
Any questions?
Speaking of Arbor Place Mall?
Yeah. It's good to have him on this board and representing the mall with, with everything that we're trying to do. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Hang around. Item B, authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to, amendment to the service contract with the Cultural Arts Center for fiscal year 2024-2025 for the purpose of adding the Douglasville Beer and Wine Festival as a city-sponsored event. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. As you all remember, probably about six months ago, you all had a joint retreat with the Downtown Development Authority, as well as throughout the year of 2024, we have had an update to the Downtown Master Plan. A lot of feedback from that joint session, as well as the Downtown Master Plan, was to have more events, such as festivals and concerts in the downtown area. From speaking with the Downtown Development Authority, as well as individuals serving on that committee for the Downtown Master Plan, myself and City Manager Marshall Hampton entered in some conversation with the CAC to see how they could support a festival downtown. From there, a birth of the Douglasville Beer and Wine Festival. So, that would be held on March 29th. As you all know, that every fiscal year, you all approve a certain amount, for a certain amount of services that the CAC helps the city throughout with festivals and other events. This would amend that contract in the amount a little over $10,000 to help market and sponsor that event on March 29th.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Councilman Davis, I saw your hand go up.
Yes, $10,000. I was thinking that the, the staff and the attire guy got a lot going on this summer to take on the Beer and Wine Festival. I thought we was trying to cut back.
Yes, so this was, the actual $10,000 that we pay with the CAC would assist them and their staff to volunteer, so our city staff would not be volunteering. We would help set up like tents of that day, but it won't take a whole day as it usually takes for any other events that are not sponsored by the city.
So, we're saying our staff would be able to go home and won't be wore-out like they do in the summertime?
That is correct. It will be limited staff. I did speak with Coach Watts earlier, and I let him know that it will be probably about six staff members, maybe for about two hours. Now, myself, as well as Ms. Samantha Rosado, who assists with the Town Green, since this is the first event of this kind, will probably be there all day, but, I mean, we're used to, I'm staying for these type of events. But as it relates to public services, they won't have to stay as long as they usually have, as well as the CAC would be paying for off-duty officers as well.
So, where do you want to have this event?
The event will be at the Douglasville Town Green.
Okay, so they all have the insurance and everything they need?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Madam Protem.
Thank you. Chelsea, can you tell us briefly about how this is going to be set up? I mean, this is going to be friendly restaurants, there's going to be microbreweries, who, who are the vendors going to be?
Yes, so the event is March 29th. It's for VIP- Yes, so, um, the event is March twenty-ninth. It's for V I P individuals. You, uh, they will purchase tickets and they will be able to, uh, enter the event starting at twelve. Um, for anyone else for general admission, it'll be from one to four P M. Of course, it'll be, um, at the Douglasville Town Green. Much like Taste is set up, but there will be not any, any road closures and everything will be contained on the green space. Um, they will have microbreweries as well as wineries there set up. And there will also be restaurants there such as Wingstop, Kona Ice, um, Limitless Eats. Uh, there'll be a Jerk Pit, um, as well as Sticky Floss and a couple of more, um, eateries that will be there. Um, also Little Vine Vineyards, uh, Prenters Ale, Monks Meadery, as well as Seven Heels Brewery are some of the breweries that have already, um, stated that they will be there. They're still taking vendor registration. It closes tomorrow, so if anyone has, knows of any breweries or wineries or restaurants that would like to participate, please go to the C A C website to complete the registration form.
I think you answered my other question, which was how's the response been so far? It sounds like you've got most of the vendor spots taken at this point.
Yes.
Great, that's good, good. Thank you, Mr. Jared. Okay, one more question.
Yes, uh, Councilman Davis.
Would all these vendors with alcohol have the alcohol permits?
Yes, they actually have to register through the state, so, um, it will be, um, more than registering through the city. They have to have their state alcohol license and they've worked with our city attorney to make sure they attain that state license.
So it won't be no bootleggers?
No, sir.
Chief will be shutting it down?
Yes, and we've been working with chief as well as deputy chief for this.
Okay, no moonshine.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from this side over here? Anybody? All right, thank you, uh, Ms. Jackson. If there are no further comments, I'd like to ask item A to, item B to be placed on the consent agenda for Monday. And that's all I had under Recreation, Culture and Tourism, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Watts and the Deputy City Manager, Ms. Jackson. We appreciate that. We'll move on then to Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Elena Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, you're the Vice Chair for Transportation Committee. Would you mind taking that one, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have absolutely no business under the Transportation Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. Uh, do we have any other business to come before council tonight from the elected officials? Thank you. Um, I don't see any. I'd like to thank everyone for attending Cities United. We had one hundred percent participation, so, um, that's wonderful. We're always appreciative of, uh, councilmembers taking time out of their personal time to go and educate themselves to be able to serve the citizens better. Uh, there were some wonderful classes on annexation that I attended, um, human trafficking, and, um, I can't remember the other one. There was so much information. It was all-day class, I should remember. But it was good to see everyone there. Um, and, uh, in that same vein, for the awards luncheon, Commissioner McMurray, G dot Commissioner, received an award from G M A, um, for, it's kind of like the Person of the Year. And, um, I went up to him to speak to him and to congratulate him, and he said, "I'm working on Highway ninety-two." So today, I received an email and subsequently a text message while I was meeting with the city manager, and I'll just read, it's just one paragraph. It says, "Dear Madam Mayor, on behalf of Commissioner McMurray, I have reviewed your inquiry regarding the right turn lane along State Route ninety-two at Gate Village Parkway in front of the Gateway Village subdivision. As the department finalizes the S R ninety-two construction projects through Douglasville, I want to express my sincere appreciation for the continued partnership and coordination. The district is aware of the concerns of this neighborhood interests and has coordinated with the Douglas County Department of Transportation on this matter. The active State Route ninety-two project north of the city in Tuppahding County is entering the close-out phase now. As that is finishing, the district office is currently designing the right turn lane at the subdivision as a maintenance quick-response report, project. The target construction start will begin very soon, this spring, as soon as construction activities finish in the vicinity of the Gateway Parkway." Um, if you have any questions, please give us a call. This is Mr. Par, uh, Paul Denard, the P E District Engineer. So all of that to say, they're putting that turning lane in front of Gateway Subdivision. So I want to thank the chief, who, he and I went to H O A meetings several times to talk to the citizens there, as well as the Ward Three Councilmembers, Dr. Burdenley and Councilmember Davis, for continuing to make inquiry and to ask G dot about, uh, putting that turn lane so it'll help the traffic. So we're, we're excited about that and anyone who travels in that area, that the Poughkeepsie portion is coming to an end. So State, State Route not, State Route ninety-two going towards Poughkeepsie, um, is, we're excited to see that being completed. So that was a follow-up from Commissioner McMurray. Um, so that was that and, uh, for us to continue to pray for the families in Washington, D.C. um, in that unfortunate, uh, plane accident and helicopter and, and, and plane, to, uh, continue to pray for people in our community in the United States. So, um, that is it, and I'll move on then to updates from city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw you at training too, Ms. Jordan, with the attorneys, and our city clerks were there as well. So thank you for your time at a Cities United Summit, too. Um, our chief of police, Dr. Gary Sparks.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton, she was a presenter at the G M A Cities United and with Germa and on boards and all of that, so thank you for your time as well, city manager.
Yes, ma'am. And, um, we do have executive session afterwards and I'm just going to ask, um, our attorneys to stay just for the first part. Um, I just need them for the first part of the presentation. Other than that, um, we have no business, Mayor, and that's all I have.
Thank you so much, city manager. Uh, comments from citizens and delegates? If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward, give us your name and address, come to the podium, give us your name and address. And you have five minutes to talk to us about any business to remain to the city of Douglasville. Okay, no takers, as you can see, Councilman Davis. So if we don't have any takers, I will, um, adjourn, make a motion to adjourn this meeting to executive session to discuss a personnel matter after a short recess. I have a motion on the floor. Thank you. Motion, is there a second? Thank you, Councilman, uh, Watts. It's been motioned by Mayor Pro Tem and second Councilmember Watts to adjourn into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. Do we have any concerns, comments, questions as we up this issue on the floor from council? I don't see any. All those in favor of adjuring to executive session, please say aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. After a short recess, we are adjourned to executive session to discuss a personnel matter. This meeting is adjourned.